April 17th. Mr. Allen, could you open this with a word of prayer?
Lord, in heaven, thank you for letting us to be able to come together with this meeting, and please, Lord, that it serve a very good purpose in this community. Oh, Lord, please bless all of our city council members and citizens of Jasper and our police department, our fire department, Lord, to keep this city running as good as it has been. And, oh, Lord, we thank you for our help, and we thank you for everything that you give us, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right. We have department reports. Any questions on those? Okay. Public comment. We have two public comments. Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward? We hold these for three minutes, okay?
We have a drainage problem between Taylor and Martin King and Jones. What is on Taylor, their water runs all the way to the end, there's nowhere for it to go. So it cools up, they have problems with snakes and all kinds of stuff. And when it cools up, I'm getting flooded, but it's not coming from my yard, it's coming from Taylor, which is coming off of 96. So I'm having a problem with it. It's not only me, my neighbors too. So I would like to see if it's something that we can do to stop that water from coming from off of Taylor with some kind of drainage in it. And it would help a lot with the water mocks and all kinds of snakes and stuff, I have all that. Then the water sits on between Martin King and drains off over there, but there's nowhere for it to go, so it sits there. So we still have another problem with the snakes and the mosquitoes and stuff. My Mercedes came cleaning yours, I'd be out there in case the snake comes through. So it is a big problem, and I hope y'all consider some kind of fixing it some kind of way, so I don't get flooded. And I spent a lot of money on my house, and it's still, I have a problem with it. Thank you.
Terry Jamison?
We have a drainage problem too. Here's my, here's my house, right here. Here's Roanoke Middle School, and here's Valerio Gas Station. And the street was dug up twice, we had a leak right here, and they dumped a lot of sand and so on, and the canal, well, there's a canal runs, there's drains that come down here, and drains that come here in the canal. And they dug it up and dumped the sand in the canal, and it leaked again, and they dug it up again, and it leaked again. And here, this, this drain is right here. And this, this is the back of the, the canal runs along here, and it's, it's filled up with all kinds of stuff. And I'm asking, where will I pay my bill over here? And they tell me that they tell us that they, but it's been six months at the end, and this last time, about three weeks ago, when it just flooded terribly. Here you see the water line got fixed. This is the back of the canal where the, is this pile of dirt and sand. And I'm asking the city of...
We want to hear that.
Yes. There's the canal right there, and there's the back of the canal. I'm asking the city, please, help me clean up the canal. There's a street that runs, Percy Street runs. It runs and intersects here, comes down where the theater is, comes out of the road, the theaters. That street is totally, 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 and there's a picture of the hole. They patch it, they usually patch it up once every two months, but it's been four months since they patched it. And it'd be nice, I drive around, don't use it, but it'd be nice if they patched it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. God. First item on the agenda is the approval of two sets of minutes for the regular city council meeting of March 20th, and a special call city council meeting on April 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Item number two, consider selecting a city council member to serve on the DECTO board of directors, currently out and scottish serving, if he turns out.
I'd like to nominate Mitch McMillan for this position.
A second.
Any other nominations? All right. All in favor of Mitch McMillan, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Considered seal bids for the purchase of 1.067 acre track of land on North Wheeler out of the John Bevel League, abstract two, and part of the 1132 acre track, as recorded in volume 1074, page 1,000.
Are the 688s?
Did not. So there's no action to be taken. All right. Number four, no action to be taken. Number five is the, what?
No.
SWAT equipment for the SWAT. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Corporal Murphy has put together a list of equipment that is needed, and I think the majority of what they have is either outdated or stuff that's wore out. And he'll come and present to y'all, answer any question you have. Just ask Corporal Murphy.
Council members, thank you for taking your time. I'd love to talk to you for just a minute. The reason I'm up here today is I am currently the commander of the SWAT team here, for your SWAT team here in the city of Jasper. Chief has placed me in that position, and I thank him for the opportunity to lead. Taking this position in January, there have been some obstacles to overcome. We're still doing, kind of a new SWAT team, they hadn't been together too long. I came in, I was the assistant commander for a little while underneath Jimmy Neal, and then I'm taking on the role as commander. Since this time, I went through an inventory, checking our equipments, seeing what we have, what we need, things of this nature. Unfortunately, during doing this, I've come to the realization that our SWAT team is inadequately, inadequately prepared. And the reason I'm coming to you is because I wanted you to be aware of the situation. We have, of course, we have a Hummer, things of this nature, to use, but when it comes to a PPE, which is personal protective equipment, our officers are not protected, and that's what I've come to you today. I have prepared everybody a packet, I went out, I've got the kits on equipment we need, and I completely understand that when I tell you the numbers and when you see them, I understand that, that the figures are up there. I don't have the money, or I would just donate it, but it's not a one, it's a need. And this here will not only better help protect the SWAT team members, but it's going to also help protect the citizens of Jasper, the city of Jasper, and the police department. And when I'm talking about equipment, I'm talking about basic fundamental equipment. I've been on SWAT team before, that we've been in some serious situations, I've been on live hostage rescue situations, going into a house, I've been on standoffs, I have some experience, and this equipment list is just stuff we don't have. For example, we had, we did a raid Friday morning, we had officers going to the house wearing tactical vests made in 1998. Unfortunately, the tactical vests, or any vest, they expire after five years. The wear and tear on them, the use on them, they expire after five years. We have officers going into houses currently with tactical vests that expired 15 years ago. That is not, that's not safe. If something happened to one of the officers, God forbid, this process, you probably wouldn't go back to it, unfortunately. We had officers that didn't have any headgear, they went into a raid, wearing a ball cap without proper headgear. We don't have body mounts where when we go in, if we're set up tactically, where we can talk to each other quietly without having to talk out loud or on a blaring radio, and those are just little earpieces, just things like that. On our weapons, they're designed blocks now, where you put a little tactical flashlight on the bottom of them, so when you go in, you have it first, and you can come up, hit the light with your thumb, and you can see what you're doing. Right now, officers are going in, both hands tied up with a weapon and a flashlight. When you get into something, it's harder to put up your flashlight and your gun, and then go hands on to somebody, if that's the case. We need tactical holsters for our leg, because we don't wear these belts when we go into raids. We have, what I'm asking for is also just a regular belt to go around, and it comes with, it'll come with a thigh holster, we can put the weapon inside it, to holster it. Like I said, I gave you a list, I showed you, I even took pictures of some of the stuff we have. If you'll see some of the Kevlar helmets we have, they have an old grill on the inside of them, that's how old they are. The military quit using them around 2003, 2004, and what these are is just old military equipment donated to the department. It's just, it's very outdated, and we only have like four of those. We have 10 members, 10 members on the team. Like I said, the tactical vests, we have, I think we have, where is it? Yeah, we have right here, we have nine tactical vests made in 98, we have one made in 2006, and two of them made in 2012. 2012's kind of both there, but if you're looking at expiring in five years, they expire this year. Where are we going to be next year? And we only have two, we have those eight people without the equipment. Also, another thing to consider is gas masks. You come into a chemical environment, if we have to gas somebody and then go in and get them, we don't, the gas masks, we have, the military quit using them in the 90s, they're old and full of mold, setting up in the attic. So what I've done here, our SWAT uniform, this is what we have. Will you stand up, Corporal Murphy, sir? The green shirt was paid for by the city, the pants were paid for out of our pockets. That is our SWAT uniform, that's it. And so what I was also asking for is some SWAT uniforms, pants, shirt, two sets, one for training, one for callouts. Like I said, there's, there's two bids here I've put in for you. Another thing I asked for is rifle plates. What a rifle plate is, is the tactical vest we get will be level three, they're designed to stop pistols, things of that nature. The rifle plates are designed to stop things, level three are going to be up to like 308, 762, 556. So if somebody barricaded and they have a rifle, we're going to be protected, okay? Whereas without the rifle plates, we're not, we're going to be dead. So you'll see the two bids I put in for that, one of them is from Galls, everything, not a one, a need, things we need. The quote for with the rifle plates was $45,981, which is outfit 10 people, and it's, it's what's needed. But if you wanted to hold off a year, and maybe try and get rifle plates next year, we can work with that. We prefer not to, but that'll save us $8,000, and that drops it down to 37 to 11. I got another quote from R&amp;R distributors, with rifle plates, it's 44,712. The R&amp;R distributors don't have the, the earpiece, earbuds we need to mount to these radios, so they're still about $700 short, we would still have to go to Galls and spend the other money for it. R&amp;R without rifle plates is 36,12, and once again, we're still have to go order stuff from Galls. What I was asking you if you'll consider is, just to let us purchase the quote I got from Galls for 45,981. Secondary, the second paint I got, and you'll see it on sheet number two in your packet, ammo. This is training ammo. Let me explain why this is important. Quick example, I got hired by the city of Jasper, I went and I shot and qualified, I shot 90 percent, which is, over 90 percent of my rounds are on target, good to go. You're looking all the way up to 25 yards. And I know this is partially my fault, other officers' fault, but we don't train a lot at home, we do have lives, so we're not out, unfortunately, at gun range all the time shooting. And ammo does get expensive, and anybody that shoots understands ammo gets expensive. We don't make that much, sorry, we, we're not, we don't have a lot of money. So what I've asked you also for, and I broke it down into three sections, training ammo for the year for the SWAT team to train. What I'm asking for, I broke it down, a year's worth of ammo, and I've talked to Angeline County Sheriff's Department, Love Creek Department, their SWAT teams are good friends with a lot of people over there. What they calculate is 50 rounds an officer a month, and that's what they, that's what they shoot. That's how they keep their officers trained up to 90 percent, because you need to be at 90 percent on a SWAT team, to be on the SWAT team. But to do that, the cost of ammo, just for Glock ammo, it would cost us about $2,200, just a little over. Now, I understand that that's adding on to the 45, so say we broke it down just once every two months, I broke that down, that's $1,100 for just Glock ammo, every two months. If we want to do it once a quarter, every three months, that'd be about $600. Then the next thing you need to consider is not only do we have the statistics, but we have rifles, and you just have to keep your training up with that. We have four rifles, so we don't need as much ammo, but cost of ammo for a rifle, we train every month, we get $1,000, half a year, $500, and quarterly, about $350, is what I've estimated. You have the quotes in front of you? I know it's up there. We all agree, I've, I've actually been laughed at for coming in here and presenting this to you, unfortunately. But it's not about me, it's about the team, it's about my officers, it's about the city, citizens of Jasper. If we don't go out there to shoot and train, and something happens, and an officer has to shoot while moving, because that's what happens nowadays, you shoot while moving, okay? He shoots, he thinks he shot three rounds more likely than he shot next. Hopefully, he hit that person three rounds. Well, the problem is, is we are responsible for every round fired from that weapon. So if he fired 10 times and hit the back guy three times, where are the other seven rounds? Because of training, did he actually then shoot somebody beyond the target on accident? You know, we don't know. And I'd like to train my troops, train my guys, to where we shouldn't have to worry about that, and I can do that. We've been setting up training, I've also actually talked to the commander of the sheriff's department SWAT team, we're fixing to set up training with them. We got a lot of stuff, a lot of positive things going. I'm just asking for your support and your help to get us what we need. And like I said, it's not a one, this is a need, it's not just for us, it's for the city, the citizens of Jasper. So if you please consider, if you have any questions?
Do you have a complete list, or I'm going to accept it, miss everything?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I have, yes, sir.
This one just has, what I have, just, it just missed one little sum, and just mentions names of different pieces.
Well, what, what that is, is on the first part, because I have it broken into sections here, if you, if you take off the top paperclip, you'll see the second one is holding together the whole Galls, Galls quotes, okay? And they, they broke it down for me, the more expensive items, so this is expensive. Here it is. This is what I was going to show you, this is just a Galls quote.
Now, I've got those.
And this, this explains the, pretty much, the, the more expensive stuff here, I'll be honest with you, is the body armor, the tactical gear we're going to have to buy, not necessarily uniform anything, but the actual tactical vests. Those things are costing pretty much, I've got quotes, I got it down to a little over $2,200 a person. But that's for level three, and that's where you want to be, even our under armor that we're wearing right now is level three. So that's what you want to stay with, because, because of the weapons everybody has nowadays, unfortunately. And that, that, so this is one quote together, and I have it broken there for you, sir.
Everything behind it?
Everything behind that, yes, sir, is all Galls. The pictures, everything I have included in there is just from Galls. The second paperclip holding that packet together is from R&amp;R. But like I said, from R&amp;R, they couldn't provide one piece of needed equipment, which is in your pieces.
The equipment they're using now, we had whenever I was on the team, we got some from the BOD, we got some for a phone, it's all, it was all secondhand, and it was practically wore out, and we got it, and that's, that was 10 years ago.
Notice this one from, the last one, says, quote does not include the Kimwood earpieces. Is this one?
This, this, the earbud, where they can talk.
For communication.
Yeah.
Does the cheaper one include?
The...
I was just looking at you.
Yeah, the one that doesn't include it is the, is the R&amp;R, but Galls included. So R&amp;R does not have it, and it actually connects to these radios right here, it'll go in and connect where this, this mic is connected, and then it comes up, and it'll have a small microphone here, and it has an earpiece in my ear, so if somebody's talking to me quietly, the mic will pick it up, because it's real sensitive, and then I carry it, and nobody else does. Or the rest of the team's going to hear it, of course.
And it makes a big difference if you're doing the stealthy, you know, to get ready to breach.
So this is, this includes equipment, just run down the list, for one person, what is it? Does it have helmet, vest?
Yes, sir. I'll go through that real quick. The one person will have one set of everything on here. The multi cup plate, if we go with the rifle plates.
What is a rifle plate?
The rifle plate, what it is, is the tactical vest I'm asking you about, they're level three. The rifle plate is a thicker 10 by 12 inch plate, that's designed to stop like 308 rounds, 762 rounds, 556, which is, 762 is...
So it's body armor?
Yeah, it's a thick body armor that'll actually go inside the tactical armor I'm requesting now. It has a sleeve on it, where you just take the bigger ceramic plate, and then you'll just slide it in there, and the belt goes across, so it'll hold it in place, and it protects all of your front and back. That's, and those are, that's why the quote for that is right at eight grand, I think a little over. This stuff's not cheap. I did my best to keep it, to get the price down to the best I could.
So I had, what else?
This is, this is what I'm asking for.
Just walking through.
Okay. I'll walk it through.
You got a helmet, you got some cover for your face.
Yes, sir. We have, walk it through real quick, get through these pages. This is a tactical vest that I'm asking from Galls. I have pictures of everything here. These are the ballistic shields that are going to go inside, the inserts.
That's what you were calling the rifle plate?
Rifle plate, yes, sir. Rifle plate, I'm sorry. What I also asked for was, like I said, we have basic equipment. These boots I'm wearing right now, I wear them every day on patrol, I have one pair, just like most of the other officers. They're getting scuffed up, tore up, I'm pretty much going through boots every three or four months. And what we were asking, if we were going out with a team, I did put a pair of boots in there, they were, we didn't scratch that off, I put boots in there for the team, I got them down to $60, some nice boots. We need knee pads, if we go into a tactical situation, whether it drop down to one knee or we're in any position for very long, you want knee pads, if you're on concrete, things of that nature. I got that down to $13.50 a piece, or a set. Elbow pads are the same thing, just on your elbows, we got those down to 18. Here's a belt, just the outside, it's a tactical belt, you'll put around your gear, your pants, and it'll hold your leg holster in place. I got that price reduced from $34 to $19.50 a person. These Veloclava, Veloclava, if you can see right here, is a fire retardant mask that comes over. You see them on movies, a lot of people wear those masks to cover their faces. It's not necessarily to hide your identity, because if something goes wrong, they're fire retardant, and it'll help protect you from any chemical burns, any fires, anything that you may encounter unexpectedly. And unfortunately, in our job, the unexpected is what we try to prepare for. Ripstop training shirts, combat shirts, they were $58, almost $60 a piece, I got those down to $39 a piece, and they're, the reason they're long sleeved is just because you're out in the sun for too long, protecting from sunburn, if you have to go through the woods, protecting from bugs, that's why we go with long sleeve, kind of like the military. I was asking for two shirts. Same thing with truce spec pants, tactical pants, the shirts and pants are all going to match any color. We were talking about going with navy blue. This here is called the TLR 1HL Tactical Light, and what that light is, is the one I described a minute ago, that goes on the bottom of your weapon. That way, you're not holding up, you don't have two hands, you have one hand free if needed. So it's a little tactical flashlight that goes on the bottom of your weapon. I got that price reduced from $140 to $115 for us. This here is the tactical holster I was talking about, and it'll attach to your belt, you've probably seen it before, it drops down, it's a thigh holster, to keep a weapon on your leg, and that's what we use in tactical situations. Some members have some now, but they bought them themselves, a lot of us don't. I'm the commander, I currently own zero equipment, all mine is on loan from me from Angeline County Sheriff's Department. They can call me anytime and ask for it back. I got that price reduced from $217 to $170. When you talk about equipment, you need somewhere to put it. I got some tactical bags, I put in the quote for tactical bags, those things normally run about $61, I got them for $47 a piece.
The wheel will stay at PD.
Sir?
These will be stored at PD.
No. With the SWAT team, what happens with the SWAT team is everybody, here's what I'm going to do, if we get equipment, I'm going to go, I already have an engraver, I'm going to engrave everything, serial numbers, every member will sign stuff out. Sometimes that's a problem, if you don't sign it out, it tends to disappear, we're not having that issue. We're going to sign it out, so we have accountability at all times. I take pride in what I do, so we're going to be accountable. But when I assign somebody a bunch of SWAT gear, it goes in their bag, they keep it with them in case of a SWAT callout, because a lot of times, you just, if your gear's in your personal car or something, you have it with you at all times. If I'm at Walmart shopping, somebody's at Walmart shopping, y'all, somebody calls and says, "We got a hostage situation," we go on our personal vehicle, get to where we need to go, we can dress up, everything's right there, real quick reaction, real quick response time when you have everything with you. So if we leave it at the PD, then we got to come here, then go, and we don't want to, seconds count. So that's why everybody keeps it with them.
So everybody checks it out, do you have a random check to make sure everybody's still got their stuff?
We have, we will have random inventories of equipment, not only we're going to have inventory, but we're going to have training on this equipment, on the proper way to use it and store it. So, yes, sir, that, that definitely going to occur. Like I said, I got some eye protection there for shooting, things of that nature. Also, the gas mask, the gas mask costs a little money, I understand that, but they are needed, some situations may arise where they're needed. The ones we have, when they're up, they're, they're just, they're the worst thing I've ever seen. I hadn't used that stuff since when I was in the military, it's been a while. But new gas masks, they were, they were at $284.19, they dropped it down to $240 for us. And then also, the last thing is the tactical helmet. The reason I was looking at these helmets right here is because you can see on the helmet, it comes with a piece on the front, a piece on the side, and that's where, in the future if needed, like, I'm a firm believer in cameras, wear a body camera, I also have a car camera. But in this situation, when you have these body cameras on, a lot of times, officers will put them on their shoulder, but what that sometimes does, they'll be cocked out, they'll point the wrong way, that sometimes the video isn't, you're like, why couldn't it be better video? Well, the problem with putting it on your chest like I wear it, is sometimes when you get in a bad situation, you throw your hands up with a weapon, what am I doing, I'm blocking my camera? These, these helmets here are designed, and I have used these before, and it's great video, I have video at the office, I can show you if you ever ask. You put the camera on your helmet, now there's nothing blocking it, everywhere you go, everywhere you look, you see, and it's on video, everything is recorded, so there are no questions asked. So that's, that's it in a nutshell, other than the tactical vests I'm asking for on our office. The earbuds, just like it's a piece, it comes off here, it goes around. Now, the cost of this, why did it skyrocket? We have 10 members, I'm not adding any more members, if somebody leaves the team, we're fixing to put in, what I'm hoping to put in place is qualifications, so we just don't put people on a team, they have to meet qualifications to get off the team, we're going to institute some kind of run, pushups, situps, things of that nature, keep you in more shape. But with 10 members, and you have different sizes of vests, when you get somebody new, instead of having them go buy the equipment, normally you can shuffle around vests a little bit if needed, to make everybody have vests.
The vests aren't personally fitted?
Well, they are personally fitted, but all vests are like that nowadays, if you want to.
Yes, I would run down that.
That's what I was saying, we'll have 10 members on the team, and there's different sizes of us, we should be able to shuffle our vest around to where we can make the best adjustment possible. Do you see the vests?
They have self-adjust.
They do have some self-adjustments on them, anyway. Like the vest I'm wearing now was designed for me, but basically can wear it, we're different sized, torsos, everything like that, so. Matter of fact, she wears a monster of equipment when we're training, and I'm standing to the side of training, and it's not even mine.
Do they have adjustable vests?
Sir?
Do they have vests that are adjustable?
Yeah, they, well, the vests are, they're fitted for you because of the armor on the inside, but the vests themselves come with elastic straps, stuff like that, Velcro, and they are adjustable up to a certain width, things of that nature. So we can make adjustments if somebody new comes on the team, amongst the team, to fit somebody else with that new equipment. Any more questions?
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
What was your motion?
I make a motion to accept the quote, including rifle plates, of $45,981.
Do I have a second, so I could be more concise?
I didn't know if you wanted to add the ammunition with it.
Yes, I do.
For under, for under $50,000, you can get that, all the equipment, plus a year. For under, for under fifty thousand, you can get that, all the equipment, plus a year's worth of ammo for both the rifle and the handgun.
Okay.
How much is the total for the ammo? You have a total, I mean?
One thirty, uh, thirty-two hundred for, thirty-two twenty for a year, I mean, they could fit in their budget.
Okay.
Twenty-two twenty for the handguns.
So it's forty-four seven twelve?
And then thirty-two twenty.
Thirty-two twenty, and that's your motion?
Well, I'm sorry, the, the Galls, what, that we were asking for, uh...
Forty-five nine hundred and eighty-one, plus thirty-two hundred and twenty.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, white side, passed unanimously. No further business, we're adjourned at six thirty more.